For your patience. All right, so I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting for March 11th, 2020 to order. I'm going to ask for adoption of the agenda. Someone want to make that motion, please? Counselor Charlotte, seconded by Counselor Palmer. All in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Moving on to adoption of the minutes of February 11th, 2021. Someone want to make that motion? Counselor Brooks Hill, Counselor Charlotte, all in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Moving on. Any business arising from the minutes of February 11th? Seeing none, we're going to move on to delegations and presentations. Miriam Manley here from Arts Revelstoke, going to do a presentation. Miriam, can I turn it over to you?
You can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just trying to get the screen sharing working. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. Perfect. Okay, thank you very much for having me today. I appreciate your time. I know you're all very busy. And I am presenting to you today about Arts Revelstoke, and we usually present annually. The city do support us, so we like to just keep you updated on what we're doing. And I'm not talking about the overall Revelstoke cultural sector today, although I have been providing those updates to Ingrid. And I think she brought that to the council's attention at the economic COVID economic recovery session, which was my update from the cultural sector. But today I'm going to be talking about Arts Revelstoke. I know most of you, but for those who I don't know, my name's Miriam. I'm the artistic and executive director at Arts Revelstoke. And so we previously were known as Revelstoke Arts Council, and we have spent the last couple of years working on our rebranding to Arts Revelstoke, which we just feel is a little bit more fresh and contemporary. And along with this rebranding, we've got a new website, too. And so I encourage you to go check it out. It's artsrevelstoke.com. And specifically under programs, if you have a look at the residency and workshop page, we have all of our past residencies there, and a lot of those were helped and supported from the city's support through the money they give to the Performing Arts Center to help its operation. So yeah, go check those out. We're pretty, pretty happy to have a new website up and running. So talk a little bit about COVID and how we've adapted. One of the first things we did when we noticed everyone was at home and artists weren't getting any, any work or support is we did a very quick Revelstoke Reflections Art Prize, where we gave out prize money for paintings, projects, writing, poetry. And here's a few of the prize winners on the screen there. Then we had to pivot more of our programs to digital, so we had to reprogram our entire performance series for small audiences. And then when more restrictions came in in October and November, we had to pivot completely to digital. And we relaunched our Revy Live season as Revy Live Online. We've already had three online performances. And we've had a great uptake on that. We've had about 70 families watching live. And then we contract the artists to allow us to stream their work for 24 to 48 hours. And we have, after those initial live views, we have a couple of hundred views and lots of great comments. So I've actually been really surprised at the, the volume of the uptake on that and on the movies that we're offering. And we're offering all of this program, programming free. So we are, we are funded to do this work, and we wanted to make sure we had the greatest possible accessibility for our programming to, to continue. So that's, that's how we did that. Gorilla gigs. So we weren't able to do Street Fest last year. Street Fest normally attracts about 20,000 people. And on some nights, we have up to 500, sometimes even pushing 600, 700 people. So we obviously couldn't do that in COVID. So we came up with this alternative plan where we did these micro gigs in iconic locations around Revelstoke. We had local bands and bands from away. And we programmed them so that they were in these remote locations, so that they couldn't be, attract a lot of passing passes by, and then we wouldn't be sticking to the COVID regulations. We also filmed these gigs. So we launched a new Revelstoke Arts Revelstoke YouTube channel. And we hired a local videographer to produce really high quality videos that have been getting a lot of hits and a lot of traction. And tourism Revelstoke are really happy with this product, and they invited journalists, and they invited influencers to come to the gigs. It was picked up by CBC. And they've asked us this year to increase the number from eight to 16, and this will be local bands and bands from outside at these wilderness iconic locations. And the city's funding is helping to support this. And it also helps us as an organization continue at capacity to be delivering festival activities so that when COVID ends, we're still up and running and able to produce Street Fest and Luna to the same capacity that we were before. So speaking of Luna, we were able to produce a smaller version of Luna, both digitally and some in-person events. And I think what was most successful over the weekend was our launch of our alleys, phase two, where we had buskers located in the downtown core. We probably had over 1,000 people pass through the alleyway on that day, but it was in a safe socially distanced way. And they could come on their own time. It was spread over the day. We didn't advertise performance times. But people really enjoyed just being able to engage with something in person outside, rather than being just over a screen and over digital. So this all speaks to kind of cultural resiliency that we've been working on during this time. And an example of this is right now in schools as we speak, we've got the Aura Collective, which is a contemporary dance company, and they're actually doing Zoom workshops with our elementary school students as part of the Arts Start programming that we do. And they'll also be coming back to do a spring break dance camp. So we'll be having small groups of youth on the stage at the Performing Arts Center with Zoom, over Zoom, being taught contemporary dance and being choreographed. And then we're actually going to film the youth doing a choreographed piece, which will then be broadcast alongside the professional show on March 26. So we're having to really come up with new and innovative ways of, of delivering our programming. We've been coordinating meetings with the whole Revelstoke cultural sector, and we're actually working with them right now on, on some celebratory programming around Indigenous Peoples' Day. And then we also take part in, in provincial and Kootenai and Okanagan presenter meetings, where we're talking about how we can work together to get through this time. So I just want to touch on our alleys. We've done five of them so far, and they've been really well received by the community. The lights that we put in are all fun, are all powered by solar panels, so it's kind of an eco-friendly project. And the response has just really been overwhelming. Like, if you look on Facebook at some of our posts and some of the comments that have been coming back, they're just great from residents and from visitors as well. So we don't just do our alleys. All the in-person stuff is great, but we also have this sort of online component. So we've made making of documentaries about each of the art alleys that we've done. And we have a 3D street view walking tour online. All of this is on the Luna website under our alleys. And we have a bio of the artist and a picture of the artist. And this speaks to sort of some of the more innovative digital projects that we're beginning to do. Another one is a project about Jenny Kiuhara, who lived and died in Revelstoke around the early 1900s. And we're working with the museum and Okanagan College to do a virtual exhibit about her life. And these are some of the images here from the animation that Sarah Spur. It's just wrapping up at the moment, so you'll be seeing that come online really soon, and it's incredibly beautiful. So please do check that out. Also want to talk a bit about the climate action quilt. I did have a little animation to play here, but it's not in my PDF. So you can check it out on the YouTube channel if you haven't already seen it. It's a cute little animation all about the quilt. This is essentially a giant community art project where every elementary school in town has made a fabric patch with their climate action change message. And when COVID hit and we weren't able to get into the schools as easily, we made climate action quilt tutorials, which we put online, and the community were able to make patches. We also translated them into French. So then the Ecol de Glaciers was able to make patches with all of their school students. We provided, we provided all of the materials for this. So this quilt is currently being, it's a Luna project. It's currently being sewn together at the Visual Arts Center. And ultimately, it's going to be 150 feet long. So you can see an example of, of what it's going to look like. It's six feet wide, 150 feet long. What we would like to do for Luna 2021 is install it downtown. And we want to avoid the crowds of Luna, and Luna attracts a lot of crowds because we have timed performances. It's between 6:00 and 10:00 PM. So it's this really intense period of time that attracts crowds and creates this great atmosphere. To prevent crowds, what we want to do, and what we're hoping to be able to do, and we'll have to talk to city staff about this, of course, is shut down Mackenzie between first and second for 24 hours, where we install the quilt. And people can come throughout the day to see it. And, you know, each child can identify their own patch and read the other messages, and some of the patches are quite beautiful. And then in the evening, we would, we're going to hire, commission an animator to animate the quilt and video map on the two sides of the street, and also use lighting on the street as well to animate the quilt. And we would also, as part of Luna, launch our next three art alleys, which we're currently fundraising for and will be, have come already to public art committee and will soon be coming in front of council. So we're really excited about those two. The final thing I just want to mention is, I know there's a new nonprofit in town, Illuminate Revelstoke, that's raising funds for, for some more lights in town, which is great. And I wanted just to mention that it's really important that we have a lighting strategy that aligns with our festival and performance needs because pre-COVID, we were planning an 80-night Street Fest for, for downtown. And also I wanted to mention that since, during my time with the Arts Council, I've actually been working with the organization for nine years now. I've really noticed over the last few years, this real growth in our artistic and our fabrication sector here in town. We administer the Kootenai Columbia Cultural Alliance grant funding locally. And this year, we were just overwhelmed with the number of applications and the number of really high quality applications, too. A lot of our artists here in town, filmmakers and visual artists, are actually now attracting money from Canada Council and attracting lots of money to make films. We've got this great, like, young emerging film sector in town as well. So just wanted to say that when we're thinking about redoing our lighting, it would be worth consulting with the local arts community, and I'm happy to facilitate that, to talk about how our local artists and our local fabricators could be involved in the project. So that's all from me. Thank you very much for my time, and I really appreciate all the support we get from the city of Revelstoke. It makes such a difference to us, and I think helps to enrich the life of the community. So thank you very much.
Thanks so much, Miriam. Appreciate that. Counsel, any questions or comments for Miriam? Counselor Palmer?
Thanks, Your Worship. Miriam, amazing amount of work in a difficult year. Curious, how many employees do you have? Like, it's just amazing that you would be doing websites, refresh, rebranding, on top of all the challenges of reprogramming and on and on you go. I'm just kind of curious what kind of resources outside the volunteers that you have.
Yeah, that's a really good question. I'm full-time, and I did have a second full-time person working for me. But due to COVID, we laid them off, and I'm just about to rehire a full-time person. So there'll be two full-time staff. And then we have a team of contractors working for us, so technicians and consultants, artists, and various other people. We have ongoing contractors, too, like the Luna team are all kind of a mixture of volunteer and consulting work.
And what, and what kind of budget, annual budget do you have?
We have, it's half a million, 500,000. We attract, we attract an awful lot of funding from federal funders, provincial funders, and then obviously we have our ticket revenue as well. So we've actually, in my time, we've grown the organization. We've doubled our, our annual turnover.
Right. Thank you, Your Worship.
Great. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Charlotte?
Thanks, Your Worship, and thanks to Miriam. It's always really cool to hear about how much culture we have in our community and how much the new, the local artists do. There's been some amazing stuff happening over this last year. I'm thankful you brought up the lighting strategy. I'm hoping we can have a conversation about that as we go forward. I know it was part of the downtown planning, I believe, Your Worship. We've been talking about Mackenzie Plaza and what's going on there. So I think that's going to be really neat to see. And just a quick shout out for the art alleys, too. I've been listening in on the ECDEV, the B.C. Economic Development Summit this week. And one of the keynote speakers, I think it was yesterday, from Savior Town, was talking about how these art installations can be a love letter to your community and really build that sense of place. And I think our art alleys are a great example of that. So thanks very much for the presentation. I'm excited to see where it goes.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks again, Miriam. Appreciate your time. Thanks for the presentation.
Thanks for having me. I'm not sure how to stop sharing my screen. Oh, wait, I think it was done for me. Great. Thank you.
There we go.
Thanks very much.
Okay, Counsel, we're going to move on now to 9A staff reports. We have a presentation from Development Services regarding building bylaw update. Ms. Wade?
Thank you, Worship. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Development Services is very happy to get this before you today to give you an update so that the committee understands where we're at with the update to the building bylaw review. Our senior building inspector, Gary Seer, is also joining us today for any of those real intense technical questions that you might have. I also wanted to inform everybody, we have our other building inspector, Jordan Babcock, with us as our, Jordan Babcock as well. So given that this building bylaw really originally started in its update back in 2019, when we had our building services manager, Dan Goleen, with us. Since we had no building inspectors for a period of time, and, and we have been able to pick this back up now that we are staff with the building inspectors and move forward with this in line with the climate action plan. So we are now picking up the pieces for council's priorities in regards to sustainability and also getting, improving our customer service for the building industry and meeting with the legislation that is before us for 2022. So what we wanted to do today is just provide a high-level overview of where we're at, the main key components of the building bylaw that we're looking at updating. And we're also seeking some direction for community engagement. We have undertaken some so far with the building industry because we're meeting monthly with our building and developer sector. And we have already discussed the main aspects of the building bylaw with them and have been supported. So to give you a bit of a background, what had happened in B.C. in 2017 is there were some model building bylaws that were put together in collaboration with the, the various professionals in the industry, including the building officials, engineers, and architects, as well as the Municipal Insurance Association and legal counsel through Lidstone and Company. The group came together with the objectives of establishing three types of model building bylaws so that could be consistency throughout B.C., and also that the climate action priorities of the province could be integrated into these bylaws in the form of the step code. Counsel may remember that we started having discussions about the step code back in March 2019. We brought an update to committee of the whole. There was a little handout that we provided to all of council in regards to what the step code were, the various steps. We've held a, our first workshop in March 2019, of which the mayor spoke at. And we have been, we were working diligently on that until all the staff changes in the department, and now we've picked it back up. So I wanted to say that the model building bylaws that we have utilized in this update have been vetted by all professionals, and the idea is that this complete is consistent for all municipalities. So when the builder and developers go to the various municipalities, they have expectations on how that building bylaw would operate. In the past, there's been so many variations, it was difficult for the industry moving from municipality to municipality, and they wanted to standardize it. So that was the main purpose of this, is standardizing it and bedding it with all professions. So everybody was comfortable with the model building bylaw. So in consultation with MIBC and our previous building services manager, Dangling, we adopted the medium-sized bylaw, which is basically done by population. And this best fits our population and our forecasted, you know, growth for the city. So that is the bylaw that we are looking at, that model medium-sized building bylaw. It's been vetted with the industry and the association. So we have been moving forward with that. In regards to the B.C.'s energy step code, when it came into effect in 2017, they have put forward targets that municipalities have to achieve. The main target for municipalities is that the step code three is to come into force next year in 2022. And the objective of this building bylaw update is to incorporate step code three into this building bylaw, which has been discussed with the building industry and is supportive. Many of our builders currently are building to the standard. So as I alluded to, here's an example, which is also in your report. This is a Part IX building, and it shows the phasing of the step code over time so we can get to net zero ready. The 20% more effective is for, to be in place for 2022. Up until this time, municipalities have been using incentives, being subsidizing or partnership with performance-based things like building code or built, lower door tests and other incentives like energy advisors helping to assess buildings. The idea has been to gradually bring in various incentives to achieve step, step code one and two so that municipalities are ready for 2022 and Level Three. Incentives are something that we're looking at as part of bringing this building bylaw into, into place. And we're working with various partners like B.C. Hydro, Fortis, and others in regards to where we can find some efficiencies and partnerships, which we would then look at targeting some of our green, Greening the City funds. This also rolls into our greenhouse gas targets, which will be addressed in the Climate Action Plan and historically has been identified in the SEEP 2011. So what are the other proposed updates? The other proposed updates are really three things. One is that we did not have swimming pools in the building bylaw, so we provided provision for that. One of the main things that we have discovered in our research is that currently, when we use registered professionals in mostly complex buildings, which is, requires a Schedule A, they, we provide a 5% reduction in our building permit fees. Most municipalities provide greater discounts in order to, for incentivizing for the use of a registered professional and a coordinating professional. In addition, what it does is it's also that we don't, we do not have to do as many inspections, so there's a reduced cost to the city. So passing on that incentive to the builder is something the municipalities have been looking for. So we're, we're recommending that we increase it from 5% to 10%. And the other issue that has, we want to address is the open building permits. Historically, we've had a large number of open building permits. There has been no clarity in our current building bylaw how long a building permit really can sit there unissued, and it's been interpreted in different ways. We would like to provide clarity to the industry and to staff. And we're recommending that, once the building permit is ready for issuance, if it's not picked up within six months, then the, the building permit would be closed. And the person or the applicant, when they wanted to come back and build, would have to reapply. So what are our next steps? Staff are proposing to distribute the draft building bylaw to the building and developer community at our monthly meeting and have asked them for a comment. We also want to post on Talk Revelstoke and asking for the community to provide input. And then come before the committee, the whole meeting, hopefully in April, to give an annotated description of what those proposed building bylaw changes that we've addressed today and whatever other, what other, other comments we may get from the builder, developer community, and the community at large. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to ask any questions that you may like.
Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Mary Ann. Yeah, good, good information. Have a couple of questions. So on the, or comments, I guess, more comments and questions. The registered professional going from the 5% to 10%, so it sounds like the 10% reduction is the most common or the way the most municipalities are going. Is that correct?
That'd be correct.
Yeah, so I, based on this presentation, I certainly would be supportive of that. I, I think that's good. The open building permit, so that's right, right now, you say there's a bit of confusion. And in general, what is your understanding of the, and how it operates today? Is it just really ambiguous and lasts for years, or?
Yes, that'd be correct. We probably have had, we had, when I walked into the department, probably over 300 bring-in permits that were not closed. And, and so we've been, you know, working diligently on reducing those. But part of the confusion is, you know, how long do the building permits sit there? When staff has done all the work, it's ready to be issued, and it's sitting there for pickup. And so we want to provide some clarity on that because it also affects the refunds that we can give. And it also gives clear messaging to the builder development community what the expectations are from the city side, so there's not any uncertainty. And the other thing is that annually, the building code gets updates. And so often those, if they're not issued, there could be some contradictions with the updates to the building code. So it makes it very clean and, and gives clear communication to the building, the builders and the developers.
And, and so you're suggesting the six months from the time of issuance to pickup. How, how long would the building permit be valid after it's picked up?
Two years. So once it's issued, it's got two years. That the problem, the problem has been that it will sit here and doesn't get issued because the applicant has to come in and pay the fees, and there might be some DCC charges. So it sits, and so staff has done all that work. And we, and currently, we collect a very nominal fee for the work that is done. So the cost recovery is very, very low in those situations.
Right. Okay, so then that would affect someone that puts the, you know, is enthusiastic, puts their application, but then doesn't get around to doing their work, so they just let it sit there. That, that makes sense to me, those six months. Yeah, that makes sense to me. And then it'd be two years from the time they paid and picked up and paid their fees.
Correct.
Great. Third question, and it's partially because, partially my ignorance, but also for the opportunity for the community to know Talk Revelstoke. Can you just briefly explain what Talk Revelstoke is and how that works?
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. Talk Revelstoke is our new communication platform. And it will help us with engaging the community in a coordinated fashion. So all our master plans or projects that the city's doing is on the homepage of Talk Revelstoke. And each project will have its own tile page. And so you'll see like Johnson Heidt's neighborhood plan, the OCP, the liquid waste treatment plan. And you can click on that, and it informs you on how to engage. It gives you the information. It updates you. It's got timelines. And it allows for people to communicate directly with the project lead.
And that's, that's active right now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. So just a suggestion, Your Worship, to staff. I, I was kind of vaguely aware of it. I haven't been there, but with, I, I think that there, maybe there's an opportunity through social media to just remind the community. It's probably become routine for staff. But the community probably needs, you know, whether it's Facebook, Stoke List, or wherever, that's where people tend to engage. And, and then it just disappears. So maybe it's just a reminder to the community periodically on those other platforms, saying this is the place to go. Thank you, Worship.
All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, Counselors? Uh, so Ms. Wade, any resolutions or anything you need from council at this point?
No, your worship. Um, we're, this is mainly to update you where we're at, letting you know we're working on this. This will be coming back, that we will be engaging with the builder and developer community and we will engage with the community to start that conversation. And we have been already.
Great, thank you, appreciate that. All right, let's move on to nine B, uh, zoning bylaw housekeeping. Uh, Ms. Wade, do you have something to present on that?
Through your worship, um, Mr. Simon is going to present on this and we're very excited to bring this forward. And I just would like um, council to know that a lot of the uh, recommendations in here have been what we've heard over this last year. We've been gathering comments, we've been analyzing our zoning bylaw and this is our first step uh, to updating the zoning bylaw and to make it um, more adaptable to what we're seeing in the community. Uh, so I will pass it over to Mr. Simon. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Thank you, your worship. Again, just want to confirm that everyone can see the, the presentation as it's on the screen. And as I continue to roll through the slides, let me know if, but it's not changing for everyone.
All right, thank you.
So as Ms. Wade said, we're here to provide you an overview with where we're at in the zoning bylaw review process. So just really quickly, we'll go through, what are we talking about today? What's the summary of the issue, go through the background of where we're at with this project, get into some of the details of the discussion, um, understanding that this is the first time we will be presenting it to you. So it will be pretty high level discussion and then conclude with what the next steps are. So today, we're just looking at presenting a summary of what staff will be proposing as initial amendments to the current zoning bylaw. So we are in the initial stages of what will be a full comprehensive review of the zoning bylaw. The first step will be presented today, which entails housekeeping amendments to clarify zoning regulations, um, update parts of the bylaw that are maybe outdated and no longer needed, as well as introduce new housing forms, which are key priorities for council and the community. So we wanted to make sure that as part of this initial um, round of amendments to the zoning bylaw, that we had addressed as many of those council priorities as possible. So a full review is a, a very complex undertaking. It requires quite a comprehensive analysis of the current land base within the city. Um, that being said, I will say that staff are, are very pleased with where we've gotten to um, at this point, as part of our initial phase of this project. So getting into some of the details now about what we're actually looking at proposing amendments to in the zoning bylaw. Um, general housekeeping amendments to the zoning bylaw will be bringing forth. These are revisions that were proposed to create a more user friendly document and increase the accessibility. So we will be looking at restructuring the document. Um, again, kind of comparable to how you would have seen the previous amendments to the O C P that we have presented back on February eleventh. Um, for the zoning bylaw, again, we're going to be looking at removing any outdated or unnecessary references that are currently contained within the zoning bylaw. There is some language in the zoning bylaw that does cause some confusion with respect to interpretation. So we will be looking at providing more plain, clear language, so that applicants and staff are, are always going to be on that same page in terms of how to interpret some of those regulations. Um, currently, right now, too, the zoning bylaw, it has had a lot of tweaks and changes to it over its lifespan. And what that ultimately results in at times, you have different staff that are pursuing those amendments, is you have regulations that are dispersed throughout the entire bylaw, which can create confusion and reduce the accessibility of the document. So we will be looking at proposing amendments that ultimately seek to consolidate some of those regulations that are currently dispersed and put them into what we refer to as supplementary conditions. So one of the other items is that we're looking at enhancing the clarity of the bylaw and as well as looking at um, a pretty, a pretty comprehensive review of the definitions as they're currently laid within the bylaw. So some of the amendments to enhance the clarity include inputting diagrams for things that people may be confused about how to do, so building height is always a really key one. Um, so building height setbacks, vision clearance. We will be looking at putting uh, easy to read diagrams in the zoning bylaw, so that those technical regulations and that those technical definitions are a little bit easier for the public applicants to understand as staff are applying them to applications. Um, regulations right now that are embedded within a use. So within each zone, there's a list of uses that are contained within that zone. Sometimes those uses will have descriptions uh, right within the permitted use itself. Generally speaking, that's, that's not the best practice to have regulations embedded within a use. It's the, the planner language that we would use. So we will be looking at removing that and as an example for council, sometimes you'll see a use personal service establishment. And then in parentheses, it'll give you a whole host of examples and what that use actually entails. And we're looking at scaling it back just to make it a little bit easier, so that all you would see is personal service establishment. Um, and then come similarly, uh, within the definitions of the zoning bylaw, again, sometimes there is a tendency to put regulations within a definition, which again, is not reflective of best practice for planning. If there are going to be additional regulations for different development activities to abide by, they should be included as supplementary regulations within the zoning bylaw, rather than buried deep into a definition within a schedule of the zoning bylaw. Again, it helps with consistent administration of the bylaw, which is kind of the main theme that this first round of amendments is really going to abide by. So one of the other key things that staff will be looking at bringing forward with this first round of amendments, which does go a bit beyond standard housekeeping amendments, will be looking at addressing some of the housing options that are required within the city. So the two key fields that we really wanted to focus on with these amendments entail secondary suites. So with recent changes to the B C building code, something that we will ultimately, uh, in the future, be looking for more feedback from both council and the community on is how far do we want to go with allowing secondary suites and housing forms other than a single family dwelling? So that is a, that is something that we will have to deal with as part of this housing, or part of this zoning bylaw update. Um, and then the other one is what we would refer to as accessory dwelling units. So having a subordinate detached dwelling on a single lot where there already exists to be a dwelling. So you've probably heard them referred to as care suites, laneway houses, garden suites, mother-in-law suites. We will be looking at proposing regulations for council to consider to ultimately address this housing form. So with that, we will be including supplementary regulations. And one of the key things that staff will be proposing is having the regulations be flexible enough so that they can be accommodated throughout the city and that we are not being overly prescriptive to inhibit um, more innovative designs from local designers and contractors to make sure that it's fitting within um, you know, the unique nature of what may exist on an existing lot, given the variety of development styles that we do have within the city. So one of the other items that staff will be proposing amendments to is the parking section. So there are some, um, there are some items within the parking section that do um, create confusion for applicants. So one of the things right now is that the way the parking section is broken down is instead of saying for this use, this is the parking requirements, it will say within this zone, this use has this parking requirement, which makes it challenging for interpretation of both staff and applicants. So we will be looking at removing all the references to the parking requirements that ultimately delineate the parking requirements by what zone it falls within. So it will just be very clear for applicants and for staff to say the parking regulations for the following residential uses are X, Y and Z. For commercial uses are X, Y and Z, industrial, institutional and so on and so forth. It will not be based off of what zone a property happens to fall within. This will ensure consistent application of all the parking requirements, regardless of what area of the city that you may fall within or regardless of what zone you may fall within. And I will note as well that this will provide a lot of clarification as well for the C D zones, where they simply refer back to the general parking regulations. And then when staff go and look at the general parking regulations, we have it broken up by different zones and those C D zones aren't in there. So it just reduces that ambiguity that's currently existing in the bylaw. So one of the other things that we will be looking at doing is proposing the addition of uses that are not currently specified within the parking section of the bylaw and adding clarity towards what those parking requirements would be. We will be looking at the process for how we collect cash and loot and where we can ultimately allow cash and loot to be collected. And one of the key things with the amendment staff will be proposing is getting the language of this regulation in line with the legislative requirements. Um, and then one of the other items is, um, based on feedback that we've gotten from the community and applicants and council is looking at how we can have reduced parking requirements for residential and mixed use developments when they meet certain parameters. So those parameters would be walkability within certain areas of the city that are in certain proximity to a pharmacy and a grocery store, as well as providing alternative uh, modes of transportation like bicycle parking. So we, we want to incentivize developers to come up with applications that are reducing the amount of required parking on site. Not to the point that it's going to generate an issue for the city, but we want to promote that walkability with developments that have access to those easy services within a, a, within a five hundred meter radius is generally best practice. So one of the other items, again, in response to concerns from council and the community, that staff will be looking at bringing amendments forward for consideration is with respect to food security. So again, this is kind of a starting point for staff. These are some of the, we would refer to as low hanging fruit that we think we can achieve as part of these amendments. We will be looking at making additional allowances for greenhouses within residential areas. One of the um, current challenges within the bylaw is the restrictive nature for accessory buildings and not allowing it within front yards, for example. So we will be looking at providing some further guidance that can ultimately be considered by council as part of these amendments. And we will also be looking at proposing amendments that would permit urban food production, generally crops, so this wouldn't entail any forms of animal agriculture, but just have a blanket statement in there that says this is permitted within all zones. Um, again, you know, the whole question of animal agriculture, that's something that needs to be delved into a little bit further, but this is something that staff are, are quite confident in and that we would really like to propose forward for council consideration. So you will see that with the proposed amendments. Um, so that's a, a general overview. I will say that there are um, some other more technical administrative amendments that are in there, looking at reconciling a lot of the definitions to make sure that it's consistent throughout the bylaw. Um, they're not any changes that are looking at changing the objectives or the overall intent of the bylaw. They are merely to provide that clarity. Um, so the next steps with this is staff would bring forth a subsequent, more detailed report to committee of the whole, we would be targeting April for this. Um, and we would be looking at potentially having uh, if not a draft form of the bylaw, a lot more detailed regulations that council would be able to uh, review and provide some subsequent feedback on from those main points that we talked about today. We will also be seeking feedback from council on what level of engagement, again, because while a lot of this is housekeeping amendments, as we refer to them as, there, there are some substantial changes such as the accessory dwelling units that staff will be proposing. So we will be seeking some additional feedback from council on further engagement. Thank you, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Simon, appreciate the report. These are things that definitely council has been uh, looking forward to seeing, so we appreciate you uh, bringing this forward. Uh, Counselors, any other comments or questions for Mr. Simon? Counselor Charlotte.
Thanks, your worship. Uh, this seems, this is great. It, like you said, this is exciting, it's exactly what we've been asking for and pushing for. Uh, it's nice to see it come forward. Uh, it seems pretty high level, so I'm assuming now is, I'm not wondering, is, is there any specific direction that staff are looking for or is this just to keep us in the loop? Um, because there are a couple of questions I have, I'm really interested in that urban agriculture bylaw idea, uh, especially when it comes to making sure that it, the use is not just permitted, but it has all the resources it needs to be able to be successful.
Through your worship to Counselor Charlotte, uh, again, the whole idea is to inform council right now as to where we are at in the process, you will be getting more detailed report. Um, we have been working through the, the draft bylaw. It is a, a very, very highly technical document and staff do want to make sure that we have done our due diligence on it and that once we bring it forth to, to council for consideration, we will have a bylaw that will be implemented without um, any challenges should council choose to go ahead with it. But that being said, we do have um, a pretty good idea of some of the, the regulations, obviously. So we are able to answer questions, should you have them right now.
Okay, uh, I'm just wondering, when we're talking about crops being permitted in uh, residential zones or in various places, uh, is there going to be any language around the concept or the idea of farm sales?
So through your worship, essentially, right now, we're just concerned with getting the use in there and that it would be predominantly for personal use. The whole discussion about having farm gate sales, farmers markets, um, that's something that's a little bit more in depth to determine where it is appropriate. Um, and then the other question, if, you know, we have had some people that are inquiring about it, um, you know, what constitutes a, a home occupation, right? So those are items that we need to reconcile. The, the key right now is we are looking at promoting food security, obviously. So this is from, from staff's view, quite a, quite a low hanging fruit, just to say food production within all zones for, you know, fruit and vegetables is permitted. And generally, the expectation is that it would be of a non-commercial nature. But that is something that as we work through the whole comprehensive review, staff will need to ultimately bring forth a, a framework to deal with that and determine where it's appropriate.
Wonderful. Uh, and your worship, one follow-up question, just around the idea of irrigation. Uh, because I believe at the moment irrigation is not permitted. Uh, if we're starting to get bigger than a small garden though, what does that look like? Is that described in the zoning bylaw or is this part of something else?
Uh, through your worship to Counselor Charlotte, that is a, a servicing standard item. And I will say that Development Services, because we have had some inquiries, um, specifically within the Big Eddy area about how this would work. Um, and Development Services has been working in tandem with the engineering group to ultimately see how this could be addressed. So there are some, some different options, metering is always an option. Um, but staff would um, be looking at getting direction from the engineering services group and working with them to answer these questions um, prior to bylaw adoption.
Okay, so it will be covered as part of the bylaw then?
Yes, uh, so through your worship, it's not something that would necessarily be um, the, it's not preferred to be putting it work within the zoning bylaw, because the zoning bylaw is saying you can't do this, you can't do that. It really is a servicing standard question, right?
Okay. But at least it's been looked at.
Yes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Counselor Palmer.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, thank you, Paul. Um, good, good stuff. Um, you, you referred to housekeeping and amendments. Uh, it sounds like this is Brampa who's been living on his own for a very, very long time and is now moving out and we need to go in the house and basically bring the dumpsters and throw everything away and repaint the place. Sounds like, like pretty, pretty a big housekeeping and big, a, a lot of amendments. Uh, is that a reasonable description of that?
Uh, through your worship to Counselor Palmer, I can, I can speak, you know, my last year here implementing the provisions of the zoning bylaw, we have identified numerous items that give us challenges on a dated, on a day-to-day basis. This is a, a bit beyond housekeeping, but I will say there has been great lengths undertaken to ensure that the intent of the bylaws it's currently drafted has not been altered in, in a meaningful way, other than some of the high level items that we've identified here. The, the key with a full comprehensive review is, you know, we have, I believe off the top of my head, twelve or fourteen standard commercial zones. You know, a full comprehensive review is going to be looking at consolidating a lot of those zones, looking at significantly amending the regulations within our residential zones, which would all relate to the density that we're proposing within certain areas. So those key items that really have an impact on the development form, other than how staff have outlined it in this report, are not being altered within the, the current bylaw. But I, I will note, um, you are correct, I would definitely categorize this as a bit beyond standard housekeeping amendments. Um, but that being said, in my professional opinion, But that being said, in my professional opinion, it is very timely and very needed and would generate a lot of captured efficiencies for both staff and applicants in terms of current challenges with administering the bylaw.
Thank you. I would add that it will be very helpful for council because I agree that it's well overdue for this major, major cleanup and I'm glad that it's happening. A few specific questions, timelines. When do you, do you have an anticipated timeline for adoption? And I guess there's a secondary question with that is even though we're talking about housekeeping and amendments and not substantive changes, are you looking at repealing the entire bylaw and having a refresh? Are you going to be going through a painful red line of bunch of stuff?
Through your worship to Counselor Palmer, staff's plan is to present this in a very similar way to how we presented the OCP housekeeping amendments, which would have been just before your time on February 11th. We will be proposing it as a full repeal and replace. It makes it a lot easier administratively to convey that. It makes it a lot easier, I think, adoption-wise as well, to understand what is being presented. And for your first question, in terms of anticipated adoption, again, we are at the very early stages. We don't have, you know, the committee isn't even being presented a draft bylaw today. I think that at the next committee of the whole meeting, once we get direction from council about how engagement is to unfold and what the results of that engagement ultimately are, we would have a much better idea about the sequencing of how this bylaw could be brought forward. And I just noticed Ms. Wade has had her hand up and she might want to add on to my answer right now or my previous answer there.
Ms. Wade?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I just wanted to add on to what Mr. Simon had said. So to, in response to Mr. Counselor Palmer's questions. So this is very similar to the OCP where you're quite right. There's been a long period of time and a well-needed effort to bring this into what we would call a baseline zoning bylaw update. So that from here, then, as we go through with updates with the OCP, we can look at the various land use categories and change them as we go through. So we'll do it in a very systematic manner so that we're not trying to change the world overnight, because there's a lot to do. And we're in the, it's very timely right now with the OCP and the master plans. And so it'll be well-informed as we move forward with the various land use segment updates as we go forward.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer, do you have a follow-up before I go to Counselor Brooks Hill?
You can go to Counselor Brooks Hill. I do have more after, though. Thanks.
Hey, Counselor Brooks Hill?
So first off, I'm really happy to see this coming forwards and there's a lot of good things in here. And as has been pointed out to council from staff numerous times, this kind of thing is just going to make staff's job much easier, which I think is going to benefit the entire community and staff. I have a couple of questions or comments type things to do with the housing options section. I'm just wondering what the rationale is behind having garden suites only be a single story? Whereas a carriage suite is going above a garage, so it's a multi-story building. I'm just wondering what the rationale is behind limiting the garden suite to a single story?
Through your worship to Counselor Brooks Hill, the whole intent is to regulate the development form, right? So it's anticipated, the way that we're proposing to roll out the regulations that we thought on within a standard, single residential lot where there's an existing dwelling, you can have one of the three types of an accessory dwelling unit. You can have a secondary suite, you could have a garden suite, which would be a single-story detached dwelling, as you mentioned. Or you could have a carriage suite, which would prominently be, you know, a suite above a garage. The whole idea is you want to ensure that it is subordinate to that principal dwelling unit on site. So if you start allowing another detached secondary dwelling unit that is two stories, where both stories are livable space, you're getting away from that now being a subordinate dwelling unit and you're just allowing two standard, single-family dwellings on a lot. So the whole idea is to keep it secondary to that predominant residential use that's occurring on site, which would be a single-family dwelling. And with the garden suite, it's very typical that they would be one story. But again, an owner would have the option to do either or, a carriage suite or a garden suite on their lot.
Okay, yeah, I suspected that was the rationale. I just wanted to kind of hear it clarified. But if I might continue. So I know, you know, like a downtown typical lot, you wouldn't want a garden suite and a house with a secondary suite, but you know, there are larger lots available in town, existing lots that would have room to reasonably have, you know, there's like one acre lot. So you could reasonably have essentially two houses on them. I'm just wondering, would that still be available if someone were to apply for some type of variance? Or would it just not be allowed?
Through your worship, the whole idea is that you're regulating it based on what zone it would fall within. And then you have your, you're supporting your supplementary regulations. The whole idea is that you would do it to preserve a certain residential character and a certain development form within an area. The challenge that staff would have, if you start having lots that are a bit larger, that can have a single-family dwelling with a suite in it and then have a detached carriage suite, you're changing the nature of that parcel from what should be single-family to a multifamily parcel. And that should be going through a public process. So the second part of your question about a variance, you would ultimately be altering the use or altering density, which would not be permitted through a development variance permit. So the key is if someone wants to have more units than what would be prescribed for with what staff are proposing, they would have to go through a rezoning process, because you're starting to get into that realm of your multifamily development, whereas these regulations are intended to be applicable for the standard, single-family lot, so that we're maximizing the use of that single-family lot. I think that that's something that should be clarified, right? So these regulations that would allow a suite, a garden suite, or a carriage suite, so you get one of the three, it would be for lots that have a single-family dwelling. So it would be on those typical R1 lots that we are seeing throughout the city, so that we're maximizing the use of them and we're starting to look at increasing, you know, rental accommodation, ability for people to have a mortgage over.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much for that clarification. That makes sense to me. So if, you know, someone had a double-sized lot, they could either rezone it or subdivide it into two lots. There essentially is options there, but it's, yeah, no, that makes sense to me. One final question. So a single-story garden suite, would that be allowed to have a basement?
Through your worship, it would depend on what the nature of that basement would be. If someone wanted to do a little crawl space for storage, that's something that could be considered. But if it's going to be used for residential occupancy, you know, we'd have to look at what the size of it would be, what size it is in comparison to the existing, single-family dwelling on site. But there wouldn't be, the way that the regulations are currently crafted, there wouldn't be a specific prohibition against it. It would be based on the size and what we would refer to as the floor space that is intended to be for occupancy purposes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, your worship. So just a little bit more on some of the details. So you made reference to the secondary suites. And I noted in the OCP, so there's some wording about encouraging some of those changes. So this sounds like it's one that's some changes that are maybe more substantive in bringing the zoning bylaw conformity with the OCP. So I'm encouraged to hear that. And I think with the one that we have first and second reading on currently, that there's a little bit of controversy around that. And I think this would be consistent with what my understanding of what the developer was intending. So that's sort of an interesting sort of concept. Also on the parking, I need to think through what you were saying about having them sort of the consistency throughout the whole city rather than by zones and that kind of thing. And I understand that at the same time, when I look at densification closer to the downtown where there's more opportunity for walkability, say, compared to Big Eddie, that maybe it makes sense to have some provision in areas. So it's just a thought. I can see where there could be a bit of ebb and flow. I guess coming out of both of those, because there is some potential, there's an opportunity for, to making some incremental changes that are consistent with where we're going as a society and with the OCP. And I'm just wondering if we will be having more dialogue or are we going to be waiting for the, a draft bylaw? And then if we start, if council starts chopping that up, that makes it, that's kind of difficult, right? And so it might, I'm just sort of thinking that maybe we want to have a session or two, and once you get into the details, that we understand that before the first bylaw comes. So those are just some concepts there. And I think Counselor Shirley was also mentioning about food security, you know, those kind of things. So maybe there, maybe we should have another session on that, drilling down into the more specifics. Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Simon, go ahead and then Ms. Wade.
I'd say I can answer the first technical question, but the latter question about having another working session, I will leave for Ms. Wade. But for the first question, I will say staff acknowledge that there may be a reason where in certain areas of the city, the parking regulations could differ. But staff are looking at having that dealt with through subsequent regulations. So for instance, the walkability feature, where we say for these certain forms of development, if you achieve these walkability parameters, then your parking requirements are reduced. So we would rather have that as regulations in what staff view as the appropriate way to go forward. And that's why we'll be proposing it to council that way, rather than saying, within this zone and this zone, your parking requirements are reduced if you do this. It makes it much simpler from a bylaw administration perspective, should zones change within the city over time. And I will allow Ms. Wade or Ms. Low to answer the other question about a subsequent working session.
Ms. Wade?
Thank you, your worship. So the idea of bringing this forward to committee of the whole today was to give a high level to communicate what staff has heard from the community and from council and how we can best amend this zoning bylaw so it's user-friendly, provides clarity, and is easy for interpretation for staff and the community so that it is more consistently implemented. The next step of this will be that it'll come to committee of the whole, very similar to what we did with the OCP. And we would have a series of the proposed changes and it'd be annotated and we have a summary. And we would talk about this. And then we will look to discuss an engagement process with the committee so that we can move this forward as to how we would engage with the community and using also our standing committees of council as well. And so that we can move this forward to have a fulsome engagement process. We would look to the committee to discuss some of the components that we're bringing forward next month and have a conversation about those aspects when you have more clarity to the document that we've been working on as per what Mr. Simon is saying. And we'd have a more robust conversation about it. So I hope that answers Mr. or Counselor Palmer's questions in regards to how we're going to move forward with this. And we're very aware of the engagement process that has to occur as we move forward with this.
Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Paul. That, your answer to the parking made sense to me. That made a lot of sense. And again, when I think back to the OCP, at least the current OCP, that is consistent with the wording there as well. So that's helpful. And thank you, Ms. Wade, on the engagement. That definitely satisfies me. Thanks. Good work.
Any other comments, counselors? Okay, thank you, Mr. Simon and Ms. Wade. Appreciate the report. We're going to now move on to the next one, Parks, Rock and Culture, Columbia River Bridge mural project. Counselor Elliott?
Gary, thank you. Just a quick question. When we started on the council, we had a bit of controversy with a trailer park that was sold and there were some residences that were lost. Do you think the new bylaws will give any new attention to that area? And also on that is the tiny home sort of movement that's sort of come up. We've gained a lot of interest, a lot of expression of that they want to move forward in that. Does the new bylaw going to bring any new aspect to it that we haven't addressed already?
Mr. Simon or Ms. Wade, do either one of you want to venture out with us?
Through your worship, I see Ms. Wade has her hand up. I think we have the same response to that.
Okay, Ms. Wade?
Through your worship to Counselor Elliott, yes, we will be looking at that zone as we go through the the next phase of our zoning bylaw updates. We have found some inconsistencies in some of the wording in the R5 zone, which we will clarify in this housekeeping one. But there is a larger issue with the mobile home, because there's also the zoning and there's also a mobile home policy slash bylaw that we have to address as well. Regarding tiny homes, the tiny homes are regulated under various various aspects. One is the CSA and the other one is if you're going to do it and it is a Part 9, there's various requirements. So currently, the tiny home movement has to be certified under either aspects and have that certification to move forward. We are going to look at various housing forms as we move forward in our next segment of the zoning bylaw update. But there's very much a regulatory building safety component that has to be adhered to by those people that are proposing it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wade. Any further comment, Counselor Elliott?
No, it's good.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Brooks Hill, do you have your hand up?
Oh, sorry, I never took it down.
All right, good. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Ms. Wade, Mr. Simon, Ms. Donato. We'll go to you. Thank you.
Great. Good afternoon, everyone. For general discussion purposes, I've just brought forward a staff report outlining an inquiry that I received from MCON Services for a mural project for the abutments under the Columbia River Bridge. As most of you are aware, the abutments under the bridge are constantly plagued with graffiti. The bridge is owned by the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure and it's maintained by MCON. And in speaking with the representative from MCON, they've indicated that dealing with graffiti in this area is just a perpetual cycle. The area gets tagged with graffiti, they go in, remove the graffiti, next couple of days it's tagged again. It's really difficult to stay on top of it. So they've reached out to the city to initiate discussions around a mural project for the area. It's known that murals are one way to combat graffiti and to aesthetically enhance an area that may be underutilized. Most of you may be aware that when the water levels are low, a lot of people recreate in that area. They're out there walking their dogs, just hanging around the river area. So it's actually a really nice area. I've had some initial discussions with the Public Art Committee regarding this inquiry and the Public Art Committee is really supportive of it. We've discussed potential themes. One theme in particular is an indigenous mural of some sort painted by an indigenous artist. And I've had that conversation with MCON, as well as a representative for Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. And all parties are on board with moving forward with something like that. And they're really happy to happy to work with the Public Art Committee in getting an R F P together. And it's something that they've reached out for assistance with. So I basically just wanted to have a general conversation with the committee on what their thoughts were around that, if there was any red flags, any concerns, any input before we go too far in the process. Most of you are aware with the process. So when I do get an inquiry like this, I will ask the applicant to provide some information that I take to the Public Art Committee. And then the Public Art Committee will make a recommendation for council and ultimately council will have the final approval on the artwork to be installed. But before I go too far, I just want to make sure that the committee is on board or it's something that you would like to see there. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Ms. Donato, just one question. When we were talking about abutments, are we talking about all of the pillars under the bridge? Each one of those would be painted? Or is it just the area that's kind of near Wooden Head Park that would be done? What's the thought on that?
It's actually the area across the bridge across from Wooden Head Park. Yeah. So that's the abutment they're going to start with. There's actually two that are really bad and I don't think I attached the photos of them. My apologies, I should have attached the photos. But there's two abutments that they're going to start with. And then we'll move forward from there and kind of gauge the level of support for the project and then initiate further discussions with them.
Okay, thank you. I think that's awesome. And I do personally like the idea of indigenous art on that sort of thing. It's kind of a great way of of allowing the history back into the community through that artwork. Counselors, any further comments for Ms. Donato? Counselor Palmer and then Counselor Brooksville.
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Ms. Donato. Maybe we could get a budding Banksy, local Banksy to come in and save ourselves a lot of trouble. Just get the graffiti that's high value. The on a more serious note, I was wondering about something that I wondered about some time ago is our grizzly bears, the molds for those. Do we know where they're at? And going on top of the bridge, there's the ugly sort of cable, those big concrete things that are holding the cables for the bridge. And it was just an idea that we could create the bears, the grizzly bears from the existing molds. But it's kind of more of the for the arts people to think about those things. But I'm just wondering if we know if those molds still exist.
Through your worship, I am not sure. I'd have to do some investigating to see where they're at.
Anything further, counselor? Okay, Counselor Brooksville.
I just wanted to say that I fully support this. I've seen it in a lot of places where the best way to get rid of graffiti is to put up good graffiti, basically. So my only comment would be that if we're going to put up a mural, if it has more of that, I would say graffiti look as opposed to a you know, more moderate mural, it will probably be less likely to get tagged over. But that's just my opinion. And yeah, thanks. I think this is great.
Great. Any further questions? Saying none, Ms. Donato, do you want to move on to the Heritage Panel Report, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. This report is just before you to provide you an update on an initiative to refurbish eight existing heritage panels along the River Trail system and to add an additional five existing panels to the inventory. The project will be led by Kathy English and Rob Buchanan. The existing panels were installed over 10 years ago, so they've met their life cycle. The project will be will consist of just replacing the panels and the frames. The content info will stay the same. We're also going to install five new panels and they'll be installed at the Farwell Townsite location, which is between the Big Eddie Bridge and the C P R Underpass, the courthouse, the golf course, Queenie Park and Farwell Park. Funds for the existing panels and four of the new panels have been secured through the Resort Municipality Program. And for the fifth panel, which is in Farwell Park, that that panel will be expensed out of the Parks and Rec budget and will just mark the story of how the Dokies came to be the caretakers of Farwell Park. Basically just paying tribute to the years of service that they had when they maintained the park system. So just for information.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions, counselors? Okay, thanks again, Ms. Donato. Appreciate that. Let's move on to the Public Art Policy Amendment Report, please.
Okay, great. So this report, in discussions with the Public Art Committee, we went through the locations for potential art installations in the Public Art Policy. And they've identified a new location has a potential site for public art. And it's the area between Fourth Street and the Fifth Street Walking Path where the new roundabout is. Currently, the area, the landscaping in that area has not been completed, but they've identified that as a visible site for public art and would like to pursue bringing forward an amendment to the Public Art Policy to include that location. So if council has any questions or concerns around that, I'd be happy to address anything right now and then move forward with a recommendation.
Okay, I'm definitely supportive of that sort of thing. I think it would be good. Counsel, any comments? Counselor Charlotte.
Thank you, Honor. Yeah, I think sitting around the Arts Council or the Public Arts Committee table, we had a good conversation about this. There's so many cool pieces of art that we could put around our community and this seems like a great new spot as well as a few other ideas. But yeah, just fully in support. And I hope we can really beautify that corner of our community. I think there's a huge opportunity with that strip just to see what it can be. And really make it sure it's a fun little center of our city.
Great, thank you. Any other comments, counselors? Support for Ms. Donato's amendment for this? I'm seeing thumbs up. All right. Thanks, Ms. Donato. Is there anything else you need from council?
That would be it, Your Worship. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Thank you again for your input. All right, let's move on to departmental updates. Fire Chief Rousseau.
Good afternoon. I have a presentation to share with you this afternoon. Hopefully I can get this up on your screens.
Right, thank you, Chief. We have it up in front of us.
Perfect. Okay, so each year, this annual report is provided to help the council stay informed and knowledgeable about the fire department's activities and statistics. This year, this report is for 2020. There we go. So the state of operations, sorry, this is going to be a summary of the six reporting categories. The state of the Revelstoke Fire Rescue Services and overview of the incident response and breakdown of call types. A snapshot of the Fire Prevention Division's activity and overview of reportable fires and insurable values at risk. A summary of the training achieved in 2020 and how the Revelstoke Fire Rescue manages our firefighters' health and safety. So council established Revelstoke Fire Rescue Services as a full service level fire department in 2015. And to achieve that, we utilize both full time and volunteer firefighters to deliver this level of service for our community. This means that Revelstoke and C S R D Area B residents are served by qualified and dedicated firefighters equal to many citizens cities in B C, Canada and the USA. So it's the same standard pretty much across the country. We have five full time firefighters, one temporary flex firefighter, two assistant chiefs, dispatcher clerk and myself as the fire chief. We have currently 31 volunteer firefighters and that includes seven recruit firefighters in training. Up to 394 total 911 incidents in 2020, there were 31 fires, including 10 residential fires, six commercial fires and six vehicle fires. So these are the types of fires that are the highest risk to life and property. Of the previous four years, only 2017 reflected higher numbers with 16 residential structure fires in that year. So a closer look at these numbers provides us some insight where to focus our efforts to be best able to respond most effectively and efficiently. And you can see it 115 motor vehicle incidents made up just under one third of our annual call volume last year. 12 of those M V I's required extrication equipment to free and trap victims. For those extracations were within the municipal boundaries. This chart shows a percentage of call types by category. So again, reflecting the 30% for M V I's as a total of all calls. Next is fire calls and alarms activated at 28%. These are the calls that initiate a general page for all firefighters and volunteers to respond. And emergency medical responder account for 18% of all car calls annually. These are critical intervention medical calls that require two full time firefighters to respond. The purpose of fire prevention and life safety inspections is to prevent fires from before they start, to stop them before they start. So you can see of 170 fire and life safety inspections that were done in 2020. 67 of those required a follow up inspection to verify all identified hazards were remedied to satisfactory. If you noted, the graph on the previous slide shows a continuing decline of total incidents. However, one thing that we found this year, the O F C is reporting that there's actually been an increase in the residential fires throughout B C during the pandemic period, which is unfortunate. So we're watching that. Of course, with the the pandemic in person visits to schools were postponed. Some of the schools were closed. I don't know if Revelstoke was, but what the fire prevention officer did was actually work with our dispatcher to hold, I believe, like an online contest where kids submitted their colorings and they were I think there was two winners from each school. I might be might be wrong on that, but the coloring contest winners got a visit from Sparky and the fire chief with ladder six. So he doesn't look very happy there at all, does he? One thing that we do is local assessments to the fire commissioner. You'll hear us refer to L A F C periodically. So the local assistant to the fire commissioner are mandated to investigate and report on certain types of fires and losses. And you can see in the picture there, that's actually a training fire that was lit for fire investigation courses. In 2020, Revelstoke had 22 reportable fires and one fire fatality was included in that. Back one. So this table shows our estimated fire losses for 2020 and a comparison of the prior four years. One of the possible factors in increased losses reported may be a reflection of rapidly increasing property values. The critical thing here to note today is that nearly half of the 907,000 estimated losses were uninsured losses. So that's 450,000 of those losses did not have insurance. The minimum level of training for the full service operations fire department is mandated under the O F C's Structure of Firefighters competency and training playbook. That's part of the full service level that we talked about earlier. So Revelstoke Fire Rescue does train its members in accordance with mandated level and training established by council to meet these requirements. Unfortunately, in 2020, in person training was initially canceled early in the year to comply with the provincial health orders and also to reduce the risk of transmission to our members. Throughout the year, many of the fire departments, including Revelstoke Fire Rescue, adopted a blended online and distance learning as the pandemic continued and throughout the remainder of 2020 and well into 2021. I believe we're going to use blended version here for quite some time until we have a higher level of confidence and get those vaccines rolling out. In late summer, the Emergency C Management Course was brought into Revelstoke for firefighters to enhance their incident command and fire control team leader skills. And then in early October, the emergency vehicle operator pumper driver operator skills were training were brought in to ensure that the safe and effective use of the full capacity of the city's firefighting apparatus. The fundraising in 2020 was successful despite the limitations of the health orders and the physical distancing that were enforced. The firefighters raised just over $6,300 in donations for the B C Burn Fund and Muscular Dystrophy Canada. And in December, so that's what we hope is Revelstoke's first annual Santa run. It was well enjoyed by thousands of people. The live feed on Facebook gave many, many people an opportunity to actually have a virtual ride along. And the fire truck was very exciting for kids of all ages. I believe we had 137 people viewing the live feed while we were going through Revelstoke. So that was great. Sometimes firefighters witness the worst day of someone's life. This does take a toll on the first responders and it reflects the high risk work that firefighters do. There were six critical incident stress sessions that resulted from incidents where our members attended that also shared those traumatic experience events. And so Revelstoke Fire Rescue supports the mental health of our firefighters and staff through our trained peers and also professional resources to maintain a healthy and safe work environment where our members can obtain support and treatment without prejudice. On the screen there is the first responders anti stigma campaign. Firefighters are some of the worst. And we encourage everyone that needs to reach out for help to do so. And that website there, the B C First Responders, mentalhealth.com is just one of the resources that is provided for for our teams throughout British Columbia, in fact, Canada. In closing, I would just like to recognize Mayor and Council continue to show their unwavering support of the fire department and for the firefighters who are dedicated to serving the community, making this a safer place to call home. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Chief DeRosa. Two things. First of all, I'm going to compliment you for taking care of your staff. I know I've said this before. Some of the things that the staff see during the course of their work or their volunteering is unprecedented and some sometimes it's very hard for people like myself who deal with this every day to get through, but to see the volunteers and appreciate the fact that you have something in place for them. So thank you for that. One question I do has, when we're talking about insurance and uninsured properties that that firefighters have to deal with, is there any consequences for the city when you're dealing with that sort of thing? Is there any reflection back either from a financial perspective or in a perspective when your firefighter is on scene about safety, that sort of thing?
Your worship, there are several concerns that I can think of immediately. One of those is cost of investigations. There could be additional costs that would not be covered under the fire insurance, for example. Most, I think the easiest way to explain is that when the fire pager goes off, the authorities bestowed by the province through the Fire Services Act do mitigate a lot of the risk to the city. Assuming, of course, that the fire chief or the incident commander, the officer in charge at the scene is making the correct decisions with due diligence. Assuming of course that the fire chief or the incident commander, the officer in charge of the scene is making the correct decisions with due diligence and due consideration. The the risk is very low, but there certainly are some costs that could be associated with fire investigations and those sorts of things, even if there is no insurance, those events and functions do need to take place. Sometimes there is a recovery from an insured and if it's not insured, there's no option for recovery.
Great. All right. Thank you for that comment. I appreciate that. Counsel, any comments for Chief DeRosa regarding his report? I see none, Chief. Oh, Counsel Elliot, you have your hand up.
Yes, your worship. Steve, Stephen, I'm just curious. We have a hundred and fifteen motor vehicle responses. Is it standard practice for the our fire department to respond to an accident on the highway? Is that every time there's an incident, the fire department goes out?
Through your worship to Counsel Elliot, yes, we have an agreement with Emergency Management BC that we will respond to approximately two hundred and sixty-three kilometers of highway corridor surrounding Revelstoke. And so we get a reimbursement per call, usually one hour or less is the standard, but if we're out on the call longer than that, the reimbursements go up. Some of those reimbursements include equipment damages or losses as well. So currently what we're looking at is is an all-found rate for equipment and personnel, including fuel and equipment. So it's it's pretty standard throughout BC and I know that there are some communities within the CSRD that do not do highway rescue. Unfortunately, we are one of those and.
Well, I know our fire trucks, two million dollars or close to that that we paid. It seems, I don't know what we get back per call, but it doesn't seem to be equitable. If the province is benefiting from the municipal contribution to the equipment alone is one thing, but then I'm sure this labor costs are significant for every call.
Through your worship to Counsel Elliot, the the rescue truck known as Rescue Seven was fundraised for and fully paid for by donations. I believe it did not come from the taxpayers a dollar at all. So that was an awesome effort and I believe the hospital auxiliary played a big hand in that. And so the the cost reimbursements, of course, the volunteers go out on the on the calls. They do receive a small amount through their stipend to their society. And so it's it's not a big cost to the city. There are some costs mostly for maintenance and insurance and that sort of thing, but actually operating it on a on a regular basis, those hundred and fifteen calls are not an onerous burden upon the city at all. It's a well-deserved service for the traveling public.
Great. Thank you, Chief. I just want to add to that for Counselor's benefit. Definitely previous mayor had fundraised or looked at funding from the lottery corporation and I think that's where a lot of the money came from. So so a couple of years ago that that was brought in. Counselor Palmer, you have a comment or a question?
Thank you, your worship. Question on the MVA. So what percent of the MBAs are within our municipal, our fire service area compared to the outside?
Through your worship to Counselor Palmer, I don't have a specific numbers on inside and outside the the area B boundaries as well. I do know that twelve of those incidents, sorry, correction, I believe it was sixteen MVIs were within the municipal boundaries. And then we considered all the other ones to be outside of municipal boundaries. So area B would be included in the in the general area for between, say, Three Valley Gap and the Golden Area. Sorry, Rogers Pass on the Golden Side.
And on MBAs, do we recover anything from ICBC?
Through your worship to Counselor Palmer, no, there's typically no recoveries from ICBC. It's all done through EMBC. So we can only get recoveries from one one source at a time. The EMBC has been a big supporter of road rescue services and extrication in British Columbia. And they're the ones that that do that funding. I know the Fire Chiefs Association of BC has been lobbying for a number of years now to to get the reimbursement rates increased to a more realistic level to to help those fire departments that do pay their members that that go on the calls.
So just to further to that, so EMBC, so that's what those outside our fire, so the MBAs or MVIs, I guess you're calling them, within the city, there wouldn't be any recovery at all from those. And is there any opportunity from ICBC for, like, I think, for example, if there is MBA that's in city infrastructure that we can go after ICBC for recovery of costs for damages, but I'm just wondering on the response or if, I'm just not even sure if we're able to, if there's any possibility for that or if it's been a discussion item.
Through your worship to Counselor Palmer, the it's a good question that it's it's difficult to separate sometimes. So anything that's within the the municipal boundaries is the responsibility of the city to to respond for and cover those costs. When we look at organizations like the BC ambulance, say, they're the these general population of BC pays into those costs as a collection. And so in within Revelstoke, we're paying into that as well. We don't get any recoveries within our city limits. Not to say that if a vehicle accident that resulted in an extrication or something like that, that the city could not go after damages to ICBC for damage to park benches or or lights or or any of those sorts of infrastructures. But the service of the fire department or ambulance or police to assist those people is generally not charged back through ICBC unless there's an injury or some other event that actually comes to to gets into court or into lawyers litigation. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, so in general, in general, and I and I guess it's a sort of a point like ICBC over the last several years, decade, I guess, has been very aggressive of recovering costs, their costs. And so specifically, if there's a motor vehicle accident that there's the fire department's calls specifically as a result of the accident, I think there's an argument to be made that ICBC should be paying for those those costs through the their the insurance. That's a point, maybe something to think about. The the losses, you talked about the losses, so it's like double order of magnitude, double of what it's been for the last four years in two thousand and twenty, and you attributed some of that to probably to increase real estate values and that's probably accurate, but probably not that order of magnitude double. It's it seems a little concerning and I'm I'm wondering if, you know, what, and I'm sure you're thinking about some of those things too. If the number of fires, you know, big damages that are happening, because it seemed your incidents are going down, but the 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 values are up a lot. And so it's not the little things that are, it's what's creating those big losses and is it because we're pushing too many people into, you know, illegal tweets and that kind of thing, which is, you know, quite concerning. So it's just, I certainly observed that, you know, in your presentation and probably nothing really to be said more on it other than I think definitely it warrants some more discovery as to why that's happening. And then finally, if I just one more item, your worship. I could work on doing the the training to the kids' programs. I I believe it's effective. I have a colleague that attributes his life to the training from his his child in a in a fire incident. Wondering if on fire training and specifically thinking fire extinguisher training for staff or the city of Revelstoke staff, do you, because most people don't know how to use a fire hydrant, or sorry, fire fire extinguisher. And I'm just wondering if it's maybe an opportunity if you're not already doing it.
Through your worship to Counselor Palmer, your last question first, yes, we are doing fire extinguisher training for the city staff and we're hoping to get some more, utilize some some additional technology to increase and enhance the the delivery of that for staff. And then back to the first question with the the values, the increase in values, we need to look at the the actual structures that are involved in in fire, for example, you know, some of the homes, maybe higher value homes. There could be a whole slew of different reasons why the values go up. You know, we could have had ten fires that were very small fires. There were only twenty thousand dollars worth of of contents lost perhaps in 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 the two thousand and nineteen year, where perhaps in two thousand and twenty, there were more significant losses or or various things that that could have increased those values. So there's a lot of things that that go into making up those values and you're quite right. It's not just the the property values, although I do believe it does play a big part in the the inflation plays a big part in the replacement cost. So there that's a big consideration, but it's not the only part of the picture. You're quite right on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your report and all you do for our community. Appreciate that. Thanks again. We're going to move on now to community economic development. So the Recovery Task Force update, which is verbal. Ms. Braun, you're here. We'll leave it to you.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. Can you see everything?
Nope.
Do I need to control Cindy? I am, no, you just have to share it. At the top right, Ingrid? Oh, got it.
Got it.
Okay. So thank you. So the purpose of my presentation today is to give you an update as to recent developments with the Recovery Task Force. If you recall, left off a presentation that we provided on February twenty-third with some of the big issues we're working on and we talked about the working in collaboration with the Economic Development Commission and its working group, the Recovery Task Force, along with our partners at the Business and Visitor Information Center and identified these critical issues that we have to work on. I finished the last presentation with kind of a list of the tools that we can utilize to support economic and social recovery in the short to medium term, as well as those that will drive future growth and foster that long-term sustainability and and resiliency. So I've just highlighted a couple of those different programs and I thought I would provide you with some more details on some of these and some new developments. So under data and impact analysis, we're embarking on a study with tourism, on the value of tourism. This will help us to assess the impact of the tourism industry and to communicate the value of tourism to our residents. Having a clear understanding of the economic contribution of tourism will allow our community to to explore what our destination strives to to be as part of our destination development plan long term. And I think it'll also help to go some way towards mitigating some of the potential conflict between residents and and people involved in the tourism industry that we've seen take shape over the the span of the pandemic. That's taking place now. It's underway as right as we speak. Industry sector analysis, another area we're working in, and this is working together with finance, development services and our working group of the commission and Open College. And we are going back over five years of business license information to code the licenses with the NAIC codes, which is a standard industrial code that that looks at different sectors. Imagine Kootenay is also supplying us with some economic data, baseline data as part of an agreement with them. And both of these projects will allow us to to analyze our economic activity sector by sector. And the purpose of this is to both attract investors and to just support business retention and expansion efforts that are part of our department's mandate. Under business services and support, a couple of initiatives taking place right now. I think I did speak a little bit last time about the Community Futures Business Outreach Program. This provides one-on-one assistance to businesses and it's funded through Western Diversification and the CBT. And Community Futures and the Base and Business Advisor Program both provide these kinds of services. And we work with together with them quite closely as part of our business retention and expansion. So we have an opportunity. We're in the middle of applying to CITIT for more funding to continue this program beyond the the current time period that Community Futures has let it and that will allow Chamber of Commerce to continue to support the business outreach and communications as well as help develop a CRM, which is a content resource management system to share information on industry business business information between our different partners at the BVIC. So the purpose of this is to assist those vulnerable sectors and again to to implement our business retention and expansion program and this should kick off this year and continue through the rest of two thousand and twenty-two. Idea Factory, we're almost there. Construction is underway right now. And Community Futures has stepped up and is supporting the fabrication lab with funding as well as the funding we have in place from the Rural Dividends Fund and the EOF funds from the CSRD. And Community Futures is able to use some of the recovery funds to support the build-out, understanding that the the ability to respond to the needs of industry, whether it's digital adaptation or developing new tools, resources has been quite quite critical to their recovery. We've seen some of the programs involved in already, like the face masks that they produced and the lighting system they produce that mimics the railway system for stores for customers coming in and out. This will contribute to our long-term sustainability as well as our response and recovery. It'll continue through to two thousand and twenty-three. Another change is our programming and meeting space is part of the renovation, supported again by Rural Dividends, EOF funding and possibly some of the COVID recovery funding. And this is going to again allow us to work with businesses to adapt to the changing business climate, to look at digital innovation, to attract investors in kind of new and emerging sectors and to support community recreation groups as they kind of come out of the recovery. So being able to provide businesses in those vulnerable sectors, especially with services and training will help them to retain and grow their businesses and recover in the long term. Permitting and licensing, another tool that we have, Development Services, again, is going to be coming to you in the future with an opportunity to extend the patio season and permit outdoor expansion, retail spaces and wave fees for two thousand and twenty-one. Purpose of this is to support physical distancing and public health, work with our hardest hit sectors, including retail and and hospitality and support tourism recovery. So that's similar to what we did last year and Mary Ann will be bringing that forward in future, near future, I believe. And lastly, infrastructure and grants, infrastructure grants, sorry, we have a number of applications in. The one we have heard back on definitively at this point is the SERIP grant, which is a provincial government community economic recovery program for nine hundred and forty-seven thousand and that's in partnership with RMR and the LSLIB to implement a portion of our trail strategy, leverage RMI funding and connect downtown to the resort for visitors and commuters and residents. So this is part of our trail strategy that looked at creating a multiple, our multiple multi-use pathway that's accessible between the resort and downtown. It'll also leverage our visitor information signage and our wayfinding signage strategy that has resources to provide information to people using the trails. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Okay, Counsel Elliot, you have a question?
Yes, your worship. Ingrid, the Fab Lab, the Idea Factory. It was, do you have a time when it's due to be on online or when when is it expected to be completed, the construction project?
I'm going to guess that we should be looking at May at some point. We're hoping to have everything completed downstairs prior to tourism season. That's the accessible washrooms and the upstairs as soon as possible after that, but I'd have to get back to you with the full timeline from the contractor. I've actually asked the architect recently to provide us with an update on on the the timing. There's been a few delays with windows and we've had to do some repair work on those as well as kind of redoing our planned tech wiring of the new space to accommodate some of the some of the program I just spoke about. So that'll take a bit longer as well to implement that, but that's been approved and is is underway right now.
Yeah, that's where I was going. I just was wondering how how, you know, when it was on track, what your expectations were. The other question to that is, is it on budget?
So far, yes, we we are still within our budget that we that we set up when we brought this to council for approval. Again, I've asked the architect. Again, I've asked the architect for a full updated schedule of timing and additional costs. So I'll be able to share that with you soon in the future.
Great, great. And then may I go one more, Gary, or?
Counselor Elliott?
Mass transit, the federal government has come up with a $30 billion funding proposal that's dealing with mass transit, greening the the transit systems that are in place across the country. They're looking at electric buses, looking at all kinds of ways to 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 move towards green. Do you think we are ready or ready to approach that that funding source to with something that we can we could drum up that might gain some funds for our community?
I would, through your worship, I would defer that question to the Director of Engineering. You know, we are involved in in the transportation through engagement and supporting some of the shuttle services with R M I funding. But as to the actual future B C Transit services, I couldn't speak to that.
Oh, yeah, I know Steve's working on it very, very, he's trying to find something very, very good for our community. But I just thought, I've been reading quite a bit about it and there's a lot of money out there right now. I just thought I'd ask.
Great.
Thank you.
Any other questions, councilors? Counselor Palmer?
Thank you, your worship. Just further to Counselor Elliott's comments there on transportation. I I I'm, I think there's this opportunity right now to make our transit make sense. And it's it's true that transit is working with some of the major urban areas for converting their buses to electric and stuff. But we really need to rethink how we're doing it. I think it's a travesty that we're have buses going around empty the way we do. Everybody knows it would be cheaper just to be using taxis than than the way we're currently functioning. I'm not suggesting that's the solution. But I I would really like to see us work a lot harder on, we could be, we could be a leader in British Columbia, leader in Canada, possibly going to an Uber type system, doing curbside pickup to replace what we have with the technology. So we're we're doing all this stuff like with the Idea Factory. Hopefully, with this investment, we could become leaders in in innovative approaches and get away from this fossil fuel waste and be serious about some of the statements we make about climate change. So I would really encourage staff, you know, to really put their heads together. How can we be innovative, not be the these bureaucracies that just protect existing modes of operating and specifically with the our empty bus syndrome that we have in Rebelstoke. So I just encourage that. Thank you, your worship.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Palmer. We know that staff are already having conversations with B C Transit and how things are being operated and looking for a better way and a more concise way. So I appreciate those comments because that kind of falls into what staff are looking at us already. Any further comment, Counselor Braun? I mean, Ms. Braun, sorry.
Not at this time. Thank you, your worship.
All right, councilors, any further comments? Counselor Palmer, did you have another question?
Yeah, I think Counselor Elliott had his hand up before me, but.
Counselor Elliott, you're done?
Okay.
Sorry, it was I forgot to take it down. My apologies.
Yeah, your worship, just on the B C Transit, I know we're giving lip service to doing things differently. But the the whole survey that we just did with B C Transit is is the traditional model. We're going to be coming back with doing little tweaking tweaking to how the the buses currently run. It would not really make any substantive difference. And this has been a repeated pattern over a long period of time. And making little tweaks under the current model is not going to address good service, reduce costs, environmental, looking after climate change issues, sustainability. And so I think there really needs to be a shakeup on how we're thinking. And so just to give the rhetoric that staff are working with B C B C Transit is is one thing, but can we actually do something of substance rather than the status quo, pretending that we're doing something when we're really just making tiny little tweaks? And I know this is not the venue for that whole discussion, but I would just, I'm going to challenge that when we just, it's basically status quo. So that's my comments.
All right, thanks. Appreciate your comments. I'm going to go back to what I said before, staff are working at it and looking at it from a different perspective, not just giving lip service to it. Counselor Charlette, you have a comment?
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, I was just going to add to that. I've been sitting in on the B C Transit conversations for the last few years, I think, because I feel the same way. And I appreciate you bringing it up continually, Counselor Palmer. I think it's something we do need to keep front and center. It is easy to slide into those old habits. But the impression I've gotten from B C Transit since I first went to their strategic planning, I think it was like two years ago now, and met the new C E O at the time, a young woman named Erin, I can't remember her last name, but she made an impression on me. They B C Transit really is trying to come forward into the new millennia and really be smart about how they make their decisions. And I hope I left an impression on how Rebelstoke is keen to be a partner in that. The Collective Impact Transplantation Group has been a big part of this as well, really pushing B C Transit and holding them to account to make sure that they don't take the normal road. And hopefully, we have that combined with our transportation mesh plan, have some cool stuff happen. Yes, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Charlette. Ms. Low, you have a comment? You're muted.
Okay. Yes, I do. I just wanted to refer back to the permitting and licensing topic. It says from Development Services with respect to extending the patio season and reducing the fees for encroachments. And just wanted to get a feel if there's any concern about that from council, because time is of the essence and I don't want to spring a bylaw on you for readings at the next meeting if if you're not in support of that. So just looking for some discussion.
Okay. We had talked about this before, and I think had our fees and charges by law gone through, we would have probably dealt with most of that. So councilors, any comments about doing what we did last year for the community with patios and allowing them to put them out? Because it is now to the point where we may be able to get them out earlier and 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 not charging any further fees. So is there kind of general support for that sort of thing so that it can be brought forward to the council meeting? So I see two thumbs up, three, four. Counselor Ryan, you're in support as well. Yep, so we're all in support of that, Ms. Low. So if you want to bring that forward to the next council meeting, that would be a wonderful thing.
So we still, oh, sorry, your worship, we still have the ability to do all three readings and adoption from our ministerial order, so we'll bring that forward at the next council meeting. And then I will leave the actual date up to operations with Mr. Black to decide when a good time is to allow them to come out. But if if council supports an earlier date, then then we'll make that happen.
Yeah, that seems like a prudent choice if council's in support of that. Mr. Black, any comment on that?
No, your worship, we're just waiting on the the time that we can clean everything and not have to worry too much about additional snowfall. As you may be aware, we did start cleaning up the downtown area with removing gravel from all the curb returns. And so we're trying to get ahead of the match of the game here and and move forward as quickly as we can to achieving the goals of supporting the community.
Great, thank you. Counselor Palmer, you have your hand up.
Thank you, your worship. Yeah, it was just further to the bus transit stuff. So again, I know you were, I felt it was a refute of what I was saying. But the B C Transit survey that just went out had leading questions for essentially a status quo style of service. I agree 100% with Counselor Schrillay on the that there's staff people, including our Economic Development Officer and our Director of Engineering, that are keen and have aspirations for a more sustainable mode of transit. And yet we're still caught in the bureaucratic systems. And in discussion that I had, I guess it was almost two years ago with B C Transit representatives, they were saying, really, it's going to take the initiative from council to have the substantive change on how we're providing services. There's a model that's working right now as for B C Transit in smaller communities. It is not innovative. And so it will take the leadership from council if we really want to change on how transit services are provided. And I know this isn't necessarily the venue for that ongoing discussion, but it's on there. And I I'm making a statement that I think there's more that we can do as council meeting and meeting those needs for the long long term, instead of having a traditional transit model that we have today. Thank you, your worship.
Great. Thank you for your comment. Mr. Palmer, it wasn't my intent to refute what you were saying. It was just to say that we are looking at this stuff, even if it's only internally. But I agree with you, it will take council directive to move forward. Thank you again. Any further comments on anything, councilors? Okay, I'm going to ask for termination of the meeting. If someone want to make that motion, please. Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Brooks Hill, all in favor. Motion's carried. Thank you all. Thank you, staff. Thank you, councilors. Appreciate your time. This meeting is now terminated.